Good evening, everyone. I will call this regular city council meeting to order. If you'd all rise for the invocation that this evening will be given by Pastor Grant Foster from Riverside Church, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Dodd.
Let's bow for prayer. Father, we thank you first and foremost for the wonderful privilege it is to live in this beautiful city that you've given to us. We pray your blessing on tonight's meeting, on Mayor Hill, and the entire council. And, Father, we just give you all the praise and glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
One, two, three, and to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Avino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any modifications to the agenda this evening? All right, thank you. No proclamations, but we do have some brief announcements. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Tomorrow evening, from 5:30 to 7:00, we are doing a meet and greet at the Chamber to meet the new President, Amber Bachelor. On Friday night is our first concert in the park, The Golden Oldies, from 5:30 to 8:00. On Saturday, the Craft Club Show is in the park, from 10:00 to 4:00. The weekend of the 19th and 20th, the Felsmere Frog Lake Festival starts at 11:00. And then on January 19th and January 20th, the Fine Art and Music Festival in Riverview Park. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Counsel, are there any other announcements? All right, hearing none. I would like to announce that there's a pretty exciting event coming up Saturday, January 19th. At 8:00 AM, it's the inaugural Rail to Trail Run/Walk that's taking place. The Executive Roundtable of Indian River County is putting that event on. It's pretty cool, because the actual 5K run is going to take place over the new bridge that goes over 95, over the walkway. So that's pretty cool stuff. It's going to be the first one ever there, and so the Roundtable's pretty excited about that event. You can get in touch with Runner's Depot, I believe, in Bureau Beach, if you're interested in that. Item 7, Consent Agenda, Counsel.
I'll pull item B, please.
Thank you, I was going to do that.
Any other items?
And then I'll move a approval of item A and C through G.
Second.
A motion, second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
I think I missed Councilmember Avino.
Maybe.
Yes, I did, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
It is probably easy to miss.
Okay. I pulled this primarily because I'd like to thank the staff for the format that's on the report. It makes it much easier to trace the changes back to the revenue accounts and into the general budget. So I want to thank you for the formatting changes. It really does help a lot. From my perspective, I've been, I think, asking for a couple of years if I could get a little bit more information. This does a really good job of presenting that.
Thank you.
So it's really good, so.
Mr. Kilgore's done a good job of putting that together and taking that initiative, so I appreciate his hard work on that.
All right, thank you very much. I know Ms. Kitchen, you have some questions as well?
I have some concerns about a lot of the divisions being more than 100% over in some of the areas. There's quite a few of them, so I would hope that coming up in this next budget year, the one we're in now, that we would keep an eye on that, a better eye on that, to keep them down below the 100%.
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate that. And we've alerted staff about some of these changes that have happened in the past, and these were rounding, or corrections to last year's budget, and we're keeping a good eye on what's going on now. When projects get added, though, sometimes those change, but the budget numbers should change with it, so they should stay within the budgeted amounts.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Can I get a motion, please?
An approval, item B?
Second. Motion, second. Roll call, please. Yes, sir. Would anyone else from the public like to speak on this as well?
Jamie Giliums, 1623 U.S. One. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me. Mr. Dodd, thank you for pulling this off the agenda, the consent agenda. Linda, you made a very good point, that the fourth quarter adjustments, you're right, there's been some major changes in excess of 100%, and I think that deserves merit. There's a few things here, as far as the airport, the people that live within the airport, some of these subdivisions, there's some major changes that are taking place down there that they should be made aware of. And I hope that the staff and city is noticing these people to let them know that industrial property down there at the airport is being developed, and there's going to be more activity going on in their community. And that means there's going to be more planes flying in the area, more jobs being created, and as long as the community's put on notice and they know what's going on, and you're receiving those grants from the Florida Department of Transportation, we're very happy about that, providing that it's not bringing noise and problems to the subdivisions that are within the airport. So I want to thank the council for bringing that. The general fund adjustments are very important, and I think that in the future, anytime you do your quarterly adjustments, they need to be put up on the screen. Your financial director should be going line item by line item, so the community knows that their budget is being adjusted quarterly. And when Linda indicated that it's in excess of 100%, that is imperative for the taxpayers and the voters of this community to know how their budget's being adjusted, and it should be displayed so that people at home can see how you're monitoring and how you're adjusting our monies, our tax dollars, so that they're aware on how things are being moved around. And I look at this expenditure and income, and it's substantial. It's big, and it shouldn't be. If you guys set your budget properly every year, there should not be deviation majorly from this budget. It should be on target unless it's an emergency adjustment. And I notice over the years that I've been coming to this meeting for 30-plus years, every quarter, there's some major adjustments that are done under the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor, and that's not good. We want the screen put up, we want the people at home to see, we want full transparency in this community. When you get full transparency, people can come to the meetings and they can see what's going on in their community, and that is imperative. So I'm not going to go into the details, I don't want to take up a lot of your time tonight, but I see a lot of major adjustments, and I want to thank Councilwoman Linda for bringing it out to everybody's attention, and I want to thank Mr. Dodd for pulling it off the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Yes, ma'am, please.
Hi, Andrea Ring, 407 Query Lane. I'm also on the Budget Committee. I would invite him to please come to our meetings, where everything is discussed and put on the screen and explained. We don't need to take up council's time. Please come to the budget meetings, we would love to see you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Avino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any committee reports from individual council members this evening? All right, that leads us to public input. Would anyone from the public like to speak on any issue they like that's not already on the agenda? Yes, sir.
My name is Dennis Powers. I've been in Sebastian since '92, and I don't know if it was a law, an ordinance, rumor, or suggestion, but it was in everybody, well, it was in mine and other people's minds, that after a hurricane went through, you had three or four days to take the shutters down off of the bedroom windows, okay? This all started when I was doing my walks during the morning, and it was one house that I came to, I could see all the shutters were up, and I figured they were just snowbirds, you know? And on two occasions, two mornings, I saw a guy come out with a little kid going to daycare or, you know, preschool. So I went to the fire department and asked them if there was an ordinance or a law or something about taking the storm shutters down, and they said no. I went to the building inspector, and they said they have no paperwork on it. I spoke to the code enforcement guy, and he said no. He says, and as a matter of fact, I can point you to a house that has plywood on the bedroom windows since the hurricane of '04, all right? Richard spoke to someone in the fire department and said, you know, there's a house that has, they've never taken them down since '04. And the fireman says, well, we got tools. If we want to get in that house, we'll get in that house. My point is, if someone's in the house, how are they getting out? Okay? I closed in my patio to make an extra room, and when I pulled the building permit, they said, because I was, the slider in the bedroom used to go up to the patio. Now that I'm closing in the patio, there is no egress from my bedroom. So I had to put a window, I had to build a window so I could get out into the outside. Now, if that is a law, either city or state, what I'm saying now is that after that building, after my addition was inspected, I could have put up steel shutters and blocked that window off, and I'd be, I wouldn't be violating any law ordinance. So I don't know how to go about trying to get a proposal made that, you know, within reason. I mean, three or four days, especially the bedroom windows, you know, remove the shutters, you know? That's my first item. Second item is, I worked for...
Sir, you've got about a minute and 30 seconds. I just want to give you that heads up, okay?
Okay. Even for two items?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I worked for Habitat, Humanity, and every time we built a house, we put in a solar panel, all right? What would be the problem of when someone pulls a permit to build a new house in Sebastian that they have to put on a solar panel? I checked with the company, it's between $5,000 and $7,000, and whatever they pay, they'll give back 30% from Uncle Sam, okay? And it's 1/20 of the price of a house, I mean, houses are going for 200, 250 now when they're pulling these building permits. So that'd be something I could, I'd want to address. Now, I went through the time and trouble and expense to have an environmental lawyer with me, okay? The time and expense was, he's my brother, I picked him up on Barber Street. But he would be glad to work with the city attorney, whoever has to draw up any of these requirements, and just bounce it back and forth. If it happens, that's fine. If it doesn't, well, you know, I gave it a shot.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you want to speak with the city manager or the city attorney, they're both readily available. You can go over and give one of their cards, and they'll provide you with their phone numbers.
Good enough, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak?
Public�一级?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I was late.
That's quite all right.
Hi, everybody. My name is Bob Stevens. I live at 150 Concha Drive. I'm here tonight to give you guys some names here. These are the names of some of the things that are being sprayed in front of my house. Aqua Ma Black, so liquid pond colorant. Tribune, which is a herbicide. Camo, I'd say, non-ionic oil. Humpty, these are all humphles, you inhale them. That one contains boil oil, as odd as that is. Captain XTR, which is a liquid copper algicide. Oh, and of course, glyphosate, my favorite. Roundup, Roundup Custom, in front of my house, all done with the else. That's hot this week, right off the list. And permit says you're supposed to be telling people, but you're not, so I'm here to tell the public about this spray.
Thanks. All right, thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask him a question?
You may.
Yes.
Who is spraying that?
It's Applied Aquatics.
I'm sorry?
Applied Aquatics.
In the front?
The company you hired.
Is it front of your house?
Yes. Well, I call the canal side the front side.
Okay, so it's actually, you're talking about in the canal?
In the water canal, yes, that's right.
Twice now in the past, you've got kind of a sympathetic voice in me, okay? And twice now in the past, I've asked you to provide me information. You haven't done it.
I haven't. I can do that again.
So, well, I mean, it's the third time you've told me you can do that, and the reason I'm bringing this up is that you get up and talk about what's being sprayed, it's very difficult to think about doing something about it without information. And you're not helping the cause any by just standing up and saying someone's spraying this stuff. You're going to help the cause by providing information that can be used to try to do a more thorough investigation. And if you will provide me that information, I'm sympathetic, not necessarily to the cause, because it's my understanding that DEP or one agency was asked at one point in time to come out and do a study of your yard, and they found no glycamine in your yard, they found no glycamine in the canal.
We could probably boil that a long time.
Yeah. So the question comes about, the question comes about is that two times I've tried to get information from you, and two times you haven't responded, and the reason I bring that up is that you continually get up and talk about what's being sprayed. Every single one of those chemicals is on a list from the federal government, saying in certain quantities they're not hazardous.
There's a good point, certain quantities. Can you mix them?
Mm-hmm.
Can you mix them?
Can I what?
Can you mix them into a cocktail?
Okay, I'm not getting into a technical argument. I'm just telling you that two times...
Mr. Dodd, I gave you the information. It is public information.
Okay, so now it's, now it's not a private conversation.
The city is shooting this.
Okay, I'm asking you for that information.
It's very hard to get from the city. They didn't want to give it out. Well, I guess we do have information.
I can get the information from the city.
Yes.
That's sensible for me to do. I just go ask, okay? I'm talking about, you told me you had information about alternative ways to do this, Miss Dirk. You had all kinds of information.
But I am on the first base. Friends of St. Sebastian River have asked to do this. Our ones asked to do this.
Well, I was, I was standing there next to you with a member of the Friends of St. Sebastian River and asked you to send me information. That's been about nine weeks ago or so, and I haven't received anything. So all I'm telling you is, if you want action to be taken, you've got, you've got to do more than stand up there and tell us what chemicals are being sprayed.
Okay.
And I'm not going to shy away from the discussion. I'm also not going to say that these chemicals are overly dangerous, because we've got information that says in both ways. So what we have to do is take a look at the issue from a systemic perspective, and not just the one trick thing. That's, that's jumping to cause, as the engineers call that. That means you solve your problem with another problem. So we have to look at it from a systemic perspective, and the only way to do that is to have appropriate information put together. So provide me the information.
All right, thank you very much.
I will do that, sir.
All right. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am, please.
My name is Stella Garofola. I'm a resident of the Sebastian Lakes community and have lived here for 15 years. I have seen signs for the sale of the parcel now known as the Brooks 512 Commercial Development many times over the years. Once it was almost sold to the county for the expansion of the library, but unfortunately that did not happen. In September 2015, many residents attended a meeting just like this one to express their concern for the development of the parcel and cited above. They pointed out the various ways our neighborhood would be negatively affected by the proposed plan submitted by Dr. Brooks. We thank you for your response to our concerns and for the added requirements for the project to proceed. Here we are again, hoping you will assist us with the present situation. The development of the parcel is dragging on for months. It looks unsightly, to say the least. Weeds are growing high. Children have been seeing riding bikes on the parcel that has uneven land and pools of water. The residents can see 512 from their homes and are affected by the sound of noise from the traffic. It feels open and unsafe. I realize that the developer has until April to complete this phase, but shouldn't there be a better way to handle this site during the process? The for-sale sign was recently removed. Does that mean that the property was sold? It is bad enough to experience the negative effects of this construction, which is more inactive than it is active, without knowing what the use of the property is going to be. Unfortunately, we have seen many variances approved in Sebastian. The residents of Sebastian Lakes are depending on you to protect us from any development that will have a negative effect on our quality of life and home and condo values. What about the homes presently for sale in our community? Why would someone buy a house not knowing what is going to be at the entrance of the community? Time is of the essence to move this project along.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carlyle, I've had some discussions with you on this issue. You know, the length of time it's taken, what's going on on that property. Can you just enlighten everyone's, for the public's edification, what exactly is going on there, and what type of recourse we have at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the councils. So this individual came for a temporary construction or temporary development, and after that happens, he has 18 months to clear the property. The code was really designed for developments, but this is, this falls under that same category. And the contractor, the owner, has been slowly, and I mean slowly, working on it, as you've seen, as you travel down 512, so the resident, she is not mistaken in that. Our hands are a little bit tied, because our ordinance is in law, so he has 18 months to bring that site in, and he has to bring in a final plat. We don't believe he's going to make the final plat, but he has until April of 2019 to bring his final plat to us. We've not seen anything. But he has to get the property cleared, finished and cleared at least by then, and shaped up. If he doesn't do that after April 19th, then we can take code action and try to enforce some type of restraints on what he's doing out there, and put some constraints on how he's leaving the property. But as it's in a construction phase, he's within the law of the code, but not necessarily the spirit of what the code was really designed for, which was a multi-unit, 300-unit development. So staff's been diligently, you know, chastising him and contacting him and working with him, but we've, we're just at a point we got to kind of wait until his legal avenues are all exhausted.
So as it is right now, legally, we have basically no recourse. I mean, he has to have the property in safe conditions.
Correct. And the conditions, you know, it's a construction site, so anybody on there is trespassing on an active construction site, and he's not required to fence it, but he, you know, he exorbs the risk if someone gets hurt on that site, if he doesn't protect it with a fence. Our code doesn't require him to put up a barrier fence.
Yeah, it's kind of unfortunate. I can understand why you would have 18 months, 18 months to prepare a site for a large parcel, but 18 months to clear that is extreme, in my opinion. It's a pretty small piece of land, and it is indeed an eyesore, I agree with you. And so hopefully, in April, we'll be able to start taking some action to get that straightened out. So thank you very much for coming. Anyone, anyone else like to speak this evening? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jamie Giliums, 1623 U.S. One.
I've got like six, seven items. I'm going to try to move very quickly through them, because I know I only have five minutes. But talking on that last item, 18 months, we've got concrete pads on Indian River Drive in the river for years, for years. Paul, Mr. City Manager.
Excuse me, sir.
Let's start that. I'm addressing...
I know, I don't want to interrupt you. I'm going to let you speak. I just want you to know that the rule is you have to direct to me, please. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, direct your city manager, let's clean up Indian River Drive. We're spending millions of dollars down there, which brings me to my point. Fisherman's Landing, working waterfront. We all know that, what's going on down there. I want the community to know what's going on down there. We're making millions and millions of dollars of improvements, parking, bathrooms. We're working with the inlet district, we're getting grants, and, you know, we all know that that was not put out to bid properly, that that was handed off to the local guys in town, and we need to make sure that, like you bring us up to date on your budget every quarter, bring us up to date on the working waterfront. Tell us how much millions and millions of dollars that the city's spending down there, okay? To improve a piece of property that a nonprofit has a 50-year lease on, okay? I'm not going to go any further, but the whole community knows what's going on in the working waterfront. We need to clean that up and stop giving the nonprofit all this additional open bank account money to do what they're doing, and it's not right. And it needs to be updated every quarter, you need to put it on your agenda, and you need to update the community, how the tax dollars are being spent. FPNL, people calling me about clearing their trees from the power lines. Please direct your staff, Mr. Mayor, to call FPNL while we're not in hurricane season. Let's get all the lines cleared so we don't have any fires, we go through a drought, and people's homes are not burning. So please, be proactive, not reactive. Stormwater fees were increased 100%. We all know that. But you have not given us an update on what's going on, how you're doing with clearing our canals, fixing our canal walls. We need, like you do your quarterly, annual report, like you did tonight. We'd like to have a quarterly report. You just increased our stormwater fees 100%, but we're not getting a report on what you're doing to fix our canal walls. If we get a major hurricane, and we got stormwater, 100-year floodwaters, people's homes are being flooded, we need to be updated. You, as our representatives, need to stay on top of that. I want to, by the way, Chamber President, the parking down there, Mr. Mayor, they fixed the sign. I want to thank the city manager, but here's the problem. You put on that chamber parking, that's public parking. Let's clear that up. That's a piece of property next door to the Chamber of Commerce that the Chamber tried to take without proper disposition of city property, putting it out to bid, and they put chamber parking only. Then they fixed it, and they said chamber parking, not chamber parking only, but chamber parking. Mr. Mayor, public parking, it's on the waterfront. We, the taxpayers, own that. So to everybody in the community, that's our parking lot. Everybody can park right there next to the main street boat ramp and not have to feel like you're invading and going to be, you're going to be towed, and that's the message you're sending, and that's wrong. You need to send the right message. I want to thank Bob for coming out tonight and talking about the environment, because you know what? Without the environment, clean air, clean water, we all know what's been going on here. And Mr. Dodd, thank you for bringing it out, because you guys know what's being sprayed in our canals. We need to get this out and do a workshop and disclose to everybody that lives on the canal what's being sprayed behind their house. I want to thank Bob Stevens for coming out and taking you guys head-on, because nobody wants to take this issue on. But the city manager's new in this community, he needs to know, and you guys know what they're spraying, because you're paying them, and you have a right to say, guys, if this is from Matsuto, who's just been sued.
Got to wrap it up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Then you have, you have a right to ask them, what are you spraying in our canals? We want to know.
All right, thank you, sir.
I want to thank the city manager and the city attorney for doing a great job, coming aboard, because they're all new.
Thank you, sir.
And I think it's going to be a great year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I do, too. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak this evening? Please come forward.
Do I get on TV for this or something? I used to be in some of your positions years ago. I am one of those snowbirds that comes down here. I live at 662 Layport Drive. I don't bob, I know some of the characters here. I bought the land back in the '70s, so I've seen what Sebastian has done, some very good things. things. I do question some things. The spray, I live on a canal, and I understand why you're spraying there now. I know about MSDS sheets. I used to do inspections and everything that way, too. So I see where you both are coming from. I question why we spray the parks. Like I see in front of Bob, there's that, what do they call that, park, that water park, and they spray all the, on the brush area where wildlife is there. And I'm concerned about that at this point, why we have to spray the parks, because I see kids there and I see elderly there. So that's my only question I have for you tonight. Why do we have to spray the park areas? I can understand the canals and the growth coming up and the investment at this point. So I know more information, I won't question any of that.
If you would get Mr. Carlyle's card, he's the city manager, he'll be able to help you with whatever information you need to get from him.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Does anyone else wish to come before us and speak this evening? Seeing none. We'll move on to new business. New business 12A, approved municipal election agreement between Indian River County Supervisor of Elections and the City of Sebastian. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we're by ourselves on this election, so it'll be $2 a voter. And at the closing of November's election, we had 19, over 19,000 voters, so I think we'll have about 20,000 or 20,000 voters. So this is the agreement to handle that election. And then I'd like to hear if you guys want to do early voting. We don't usually do that when we're by ourselves.
Okay. My personal belief is that I would not like to see the expense of early voting take place, but, you know, I'll listen to council members on that and then look for a motion on item A.
Just a question. If the early voting, is it $2?
That's going to be.
Does that change the cost ratio?
It changes when we're by ourselves on the ballot. When we can go on the ballot with the county or the state, it's 50 cents a voter. So this year, it's going to be $2.
Right, I understand that.
And then early voting is, Leslie says her charge will be like $10,000 to $11,000 for early voting.
An additional 10 or 11,000. Okay, I also would not want to spend the money for that.
I don't see why we need that in an off-presidential year.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I get a motion on item 12A, please, council? Move approval, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak on item 12A? Seeing none. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, who's my second?
I beg your pardon?
Who's my second to the motion?
Can you repeat the motion, sir?
Madam Vice Mayor.
Oh, you seconded it? Okay. You need the.
Motion was to approve.
Gotcha.
Did you want to repeat that, Mr. McGowan? Oh, okay.
I didn't hear if it was to approve or just.
Okay, yes, no problem. I apologize. Roll call, please.
Councilmember E. Vino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Item 12B, resolution number R-19-02. Mr. Stokes.
Resolution of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, authorizing acceptance of a Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, public transportation grant agreement, PDGA, providing $10,000 funding for the replacement of a security gate at Sebastian Municipal Airport and authorizing the city manager to execute and submit appropriate documents, providing for conflict, providing for scrivviness errors, providing for an effective date.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Carlyle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this gate three, I believe it is, at the airport is in bad shape. It's antiquated systems. We've gotten a grant for up to $10,000, 80% matching grant. They pay 80, we pay 20 to replace that gate and to get it, and it's part of our security for our airport. So we'd ask the city council to approve the agreement with FDOT for the $10,000, 80-20 matching grant.
Thank you, council. What's your pleasure?
Move approval.
Second.
Questions at this time? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Damian Gilliam, 1623 U.S. One. I want to thank staff for really going out and getting those FDOT funds, $8,000. The airport match was $2,000 for a total of $10,000. Saved the taxpayers of this community a lot of money, as well as the airport fund. I want to thank the city council and staff, the leadership of our city manager, city attorney for looking over these documents, and the purchasing agent, I'm not sure of his name yet, but thank you. We're saving the taxpayers' money. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the public have anything to say on this issue? Seeing none. Any more questions from council? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember E. Vino.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Item C, approve CSA number six to continuing services agreement with Scholke, Biddle, and Stoddard. Mr. Carlyle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is for the impervious parking at the working waterfront. We received the grant from FIND to do the working waterfront impervious parking lot and also the shoreline preservation. The former city engineer did the draft drawings, but there were no construction drawings completed. In order for us to go to bid and get this out on the street, we need to get those drawings done so we get all the EPA permits and DEP permits and the water management permits to move this project forward. We'd ask the city council to approve the, it'll be up to $21,000 and authorize the city manager to sign the appropriate documents.
All right, great. Council, what's your pleasure?
I move approval.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak on item 12C?
There wasn't a second, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I seconded.
Got a second. Guess I'm a little bit hurried, aren't I? Long day today. Does anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Damian Gilliam. You know, I talked about the working waterfront. We've got nonprofits down there that got 50-year leases. We need some contributions from those guys down there that are getting low lease rent from the taxpayers of this community. And to see $21,000 to be done for engineering fees as a developer in this community, that's extremely on the high end. And I'd like to see participation and contribution from the nonprofits that are benefiting from that property down there. And I want the whole community to know that there's no contribution from the nonprofit down there. And there's a few of them. And they know who they are. I'm not going to mention any names, Mr. Mayor, but we're doing bathrooms, we're doing roofs, we're doing equipment, we're doing ice machines. We all know what's going on down there, and it's getting into the millions and millions of dollars. And that's why I say every quarter, if you're going to continue to spend our tax dollars down there, we want a report, we want full transparency. And to have an engineer charge the city $21,000 because we need to get a right construction set of plans, then there should be some participation. Those guys, I don't see any dividends coming back to the taxpayers. When we had Hurricane Harbor down there, they were paying us $25,000 a year in property taxes. Now it's zero, negative. And now we're paying. And I understand that they're paying some minimum lease payments that's being done, you know, done down there. We all know what it's all about, and I don't need to get into the details because I have those records. But, Mr. Mayor, enough is enough. Where are you going to draw the line where we're going to see some participation from the nonprofits of this community? You know, nonprofits are supposed to give to the community. I'm starting to see nonprofits taken from this community. And that's not what we want as taxpayers of this community, especially when Hurricane Harbor was paying us, again, I'm going to repeat, in excess of $25,000 a year in property taxes. And I'm not talking about the marina next door. If we look up their taxes, we're talking excessive $10,000, $15,000, $20,000. So there's two parcels down there that everybody in the community should know, Mr. Mayor, that we're losing an income to pay and defer some of the other taxes that have to be done in this community so that we can help nonprofits that are getting... Do you want me to tell everybody in the community what they're paying per square foot? I don't think they want to know because they're going to be ashamed on what the price per square foot on Indian River Drive these guys are paying. And if they can't do fundraises and they can't get their act together, and they were handed off this piece of property, and I'm not picking on anybody, I'm not going to mention any names, it is wrong. It's outright wrong. And we need to see some of these guys step up and quarterly, we want to see what they're doing down there, and show us some income and expenses and get it out to the public so the people know how the taxpayers and their money's being spent. So I'm hoping that the new city manager will investigate what's going on down there. They're getting money and grant money from the inlet district commission. We pay all taxes for the boat traveling, the boats traveling up and down the intracoastal waterway, and we're grabbing funds from them as well. So it's not just the taxpayers, it's the state taxpayers as well. So, Mr. Mayor, as our personal representative, please, every time you put this on the agenda and I see you continue to spend our tax money, and I don't see any matching funds coming from those guys down there that have the 50-year lease, and I don't need to tell you how much they're paying per square foot, it's wrong. It really is. Thank you very much, and thank you for not interrupting.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item?
All right, seeing none. First of all, I would like to say that it's amazing to see the great improvements that have been made to this property over the years. I am very, very fond of the working waterfront. I'm very proud of the City of Sebastian for the hard work and the commitment it's put in to procuring the grant funding from the state and to continue to get that grant funding from the state to keep improving this property. Boy, I tell you, if you remember what 2008 looked like along the riverfront, you might not, Mr. Carlyle, but you may have been fishing over here.
I was.
We had a dilapidated building that was grown over with vines and weeds, and, boy, it was just a mess there. And there were a whole bunch of businesses that were either going out of business or being foreclosed by the state or by the bank, and, you know, those things aren't happening now. We've got a thriving riverfront. We've got a riverfront where we've got a lot of successful businesses down there that are doing quite well. And, you know, when I talk to the citizens of Sebastian there, they think that's a gem and a jewel that we have along our riverfront. So very proud of it, and, you know, I'm very proud of the fact that we're continuing this. The bathrooms are great, the parking lot's going to be amazing, what great improvements that we have down there. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from council?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm getting feedback from this monstrous machine here. This is the last project on the working waterfront.
That's correct.
So once we finish the fixes on the seawall and the parking lot, then we've actually committed, we finished all of our commitments under the grant for that project.
Yeah, so what this will do is that, right now, we just have gravel going into the intracoastal waterway. We have erosion underneath the working waterfront building, which is the next one we're going to do. So this is going to help the water quality, it's going to be a parking lot that's going to be a parking lot, just not a gravel field.
Oh, no, I'm not questioning the projects. I'm just trying to, I mean, this is the last thing that we're obligated to do under the grants, either for the Stan Mayfield grant or for the additional FIND grant.
Community trust.
Other ones.
Community trust grant, yes.
Yes.
This should wrap all that up.
That should wrap all that up. So then we actually are going to, we're going to go into, I'll call it the maintenance mode, right?
Correct.
Okay, so as part of our budget cycle this year, we're going to be looking at some maintenance issues that we have to deal with down there, because I know there's many.
Yes, sir.
But we're going to do that as part of the budget process, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's my whole issue, because we're now at a point where we finished all of the construction needed to bring that working waterfront up to where the grant told us to bring it up to and so forth, and now we're going into the maintenance mode on it, which we certainly need to do. We just need to get a handle on the costs associated with that, so. But no, this project here is, that parking lot, it needs to be fixed, but then we need to figure out a way to get half the people that park there to park someplace else, but...
This parking lot just south, right?
That's not easy to do. All right.
Anything else from council?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember E. Vino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, approve, change order number one. Mr. Carlyle.
Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned with the Scholke contract, we did not have the full design, and we didn't feel it was appropriate to have two engineering firms out there reviewing a project that they were going simultaneously. So we asked Applied Technology ATM to come and do the inspections and certification as they're doing the inspection and certification for the shoreline stabilization. It's a cost-saving method. There's no reason to have two engineers going back and forth on what would technically be a single project. So we'd ask you to approve the change order with ATM to allow that to happen.
Okay, thank you, council. What's your pleasure?
Approval, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second that. Anyone from the public wish to speak on item D?
Yes, sir.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Talking about the working waterfront. We're already talking about change order one, and I've only been away from the podium for less than five minutes. Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Thank you for putting you guys on notice. We don't want any more construction change orders, because we know what happened with City Hall here. It started at 7.5 million and went up to 12 million. You know what it was? It was change orders. And we don't want that. As the taxpayers, you are our representatives, your staff needs to understand, let's get it right. No more change orders. Change order number one, change order, that's it. Now, I can sit here and waste your time and go through the transmittal form, and I'm not going to do that, but it's additional money that's going into that project with no funding and no money from the people that are using and utilizing. The nonprofit that's down there is not contributing anything, zilch, nothing. And I'm not going to mention their name, but it's wrong. And let's get it right. Let's get these change orders in the beginning. Let's go ahead and put this thing out to bid properly so that we don't have to apply two different companies to do one person's job. $21,000, $3,000, that's the quickest increase I've seen in less than five minutes, and that's wrong. So as our representatives looking after our tax dollars, and I'm going to be down here watching the pennies, because that's how I am, and I'm going to remind you, Mr. Mayor, we're not going to have another City Hall on our hands. The 7.5 million you spent for this town, this City Hall here, and it went to 12 million, it's unacceptable. Thank you.
Does anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item? All right, seeing none. Any further discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember E. Vino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Mr. Stokes, it is that time of the evening for you to give an amazing presentation.
I don't know how amazing it will be. I don't have much. The only thing I wanted to let Councilman Dodd and the others and all of you know is that we are still compiling all that, those code links. There are a lot of them, and we're working on it, so we'll have a report for you, which will also probably accompany a proposed change to how we handle them.
Good. Thank you very much. Mr. Carlyle.
I don't have anything to add at this time. I'm sorry?
We plan to be dazzled.
Well, I'm going to dazzle you with, I don't have much to, I don't have anything to add to the meeting this evening.
Thank you very much.
I have nothing, thank you.
That's fine. Councilmember E. Vino.
I don't have anything tonight.
Mr. McPartlin.
No, sir.
And I have nothing further to bring this evening. Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Dodd.
No, sir, nothing.
All right, well, Happy New Year, everyone. We'll see you in a couple weeks. We are adjourned.